Okay, welcome everybody.
We are live.
Perfect. We're gonna start off with the Director of Planning and Community Development position.
Good afternoon. I just want to introduce Brandon Garrett. He is from Lincoln and he has, where he's been most recently, working for the Joint City and County Planning Department there for the past 10 years. Brandon?
Good afternoon. It's good to be here, good to be here today, here in Council Bluffs. My family's very excited to, to move here. We actually had an offer that was just approved on a house here yesterday. So now we have that out of the way. We are very much looking forward to making the full move. And I, I told the mayor and others that I think that Council Bluffs is full of opportunity throughout. I mean, I think there's a lot of energy, a lot of pent-up possibilities ahead of us, and I can't wait to be a part of that. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Welcome.
Very impressed, particularly your background in neighborhood and other planning. And I'm somewhat familiar with what they do in that regard in Lincoln. And I'm glad to see us bring that level of expertise into our community.
Where did you buy the house at?
Excuse me?
She's nosy.
Specific address.
It's in a historic district.
Credit card numbers also, please.
Within three miles of downtown.
See?
No, it's, it's on Oakland Avenue.
Oh.
Nice.
It was just a great opportunity and the previous owner lived there for 38 years, loved the house. She took very good care of it. And we kind of promised to take it over for her and, and kind of, you know, respect that.
Well, you'll be my neighbor, so welcome to the neighborhood.
All right. Okay, there we go.
Other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, onto the agenda. Anything on the consent agenda?
Thanks for working to get caught up on the financial reports. I appreciate that very much.
Anything on the public hearings?
I just had one quick question for Justin. We're looking at approving the Building and Construction Code for, what are we bringing it up to 2016, 2015? But one of the things in the staff write-up was that it will help with our ISO. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought my question was gonna be for you.
There's a couple different ISOs in there.
Oh, all right. I thought it was for that one.
No, there are two ISO ratings. The fire department's and then the building department is graded in the same context. So is our water department for the city also.
Okay, so does that ISO have any effect on Justin's ISO?
No, they are completely different, but they're the same type of score that, that affects the insurance rates for the community.
Okay, so that was important. So it does affect the insurance rates?
Yes.
Okay. In doing this, is it going to lower the insurance rates at all?
It will lower the insurance rates for all buildings built underneath the codes that are adopted at the time of construction.
Okay. The only concerns I've had about this is that implementation, when are we gonna implement? And, you know, we discussed that you would work with people that were currently in the midst of doing their plans, you know, and might have been doing them under the old code.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm always concerned when we leave it to you to make those judgment calls, because then people do the, you show favoritism. You let this guy do it under this code. You made me do it under this code. Is there any issue with having an implementation date, you know, effective as of, say, October 1? That way anybody getting their plans together, everybody's gonna be working under the codes that were in effect at the time they started their plans?
Mrs. White, we, we have detailed meetings with developers and architects and engineers throughout the process of, of the design phase. When we have, have those meetings, we keep minute records of them. We know exactly who's bringing forth 30 or 40 percent plans, so that as they go into the, the final development phase for the building owner and the user of the building, they're not throwing a hitch to where they've designed to the 2009 code and now we're going to say you're required to be on the 2015 code.
Right, but once we pass it into law, then it's the law.
It is the law, you're right.
And that's my concern. And so by not making them build to the new code since they were already in the process, I don't want to put you in the position, because once we adopt it, it's the new law. So.
That is correct.
That's why I'm looking at maybe having an implementation date a little bit further out. And I don't know what that date should be. I'm just trying to make sure that we don't end up with any issues between now and, you know, once everybody's onto the new code.
I, in my 35 years of doing this, this is the standard procedure that we've used throughout that whole process. I don't see that it's going to be an issue, but I understand your concern.
But I don't know what date you set. I mean.
Yeah, I don't either. That's why I'm asking.
Design maybe takes you six months, four months, and then construction takes you 18 to 24 months. And so, you know, at some point you just gotta.
Yeah, that's my concern.
But having a date would be helpful, because then, then nobody can say, you know, if you got it in by that date, you knew about it in advance. And people can't say, not that you would play favorites, of course you wouldn't, but people will make that allegation. So I, I share that concern. I think we ought to pick a date, and maybe October.
Yeah, I don't know how far out. I don't want to affect anybody's ISO. So anybody.
That concern is, is very high on my list of priorities is to not have it affect that.
Mine too.
We, at this point, I believe are in line to possibly have a two for the building department, and hopefully maybe just a little bit higher if.
When will you be submitting?
We've already had the exam, the examination by the representative.
Okay, all right. And so it's contingent, that going to a two would be contingent on adoption of this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so anybody that's already building to the newer code, to the 2015, they won't get the lower insurance rate if we haven't adopted it?
That is correct, yes.
Well, that changes how I'm thinking about it, because I really don't want to affect that ISO. So tell me how you would make a decision if I came in, if I were, if you, if we had meeting notes and I'm at 40 percent, I'm good. If I submitted anything up until the date we adopted this, I would be.
If, if you, if you bring in your plans, or you call me and we have a meeting, and we have the, the coded, or we have the ordinance adopted, I'm gonna tell you it's the 15. If I have previously, before that adoption, had meetings with you, those individuals would be on the code that was in effect at the time.
Okay, so there, then we could adopt something with the one caveat that anybody who had already started through the procedure with Steve would not be affected by the.
I think, well, I think if, if during the meeting, if we have some intent that we. We have some intent expressed, would that be good enough to?
You'd be giving direction to Steve as to how you expect it to be enforced.
What do the architects do? I mean, they're, my sense is the architects aren't saying Council Bluffs is on the 2009 code, so we design stuff for them.
Oh, yes, sir, they do.
Do they, really?
Yes, they, we, we are in constant contact with architects all over the Midwest and country, especially with the Southlands project. We're dealing with architects and engineers out of Philadelphia.
So they're not designing to the.
They know exactly where we are in the ordinance process at that point.
But they may have already designed some to 2009 instead of 2015 then?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. So I, I think if that's adequate, then we'll just give direction at the time of adoption that, you know, we would expect that anybody that had already started through the process with you, and there were notes in the system as at least having a first meeting, would be under the '09 code?
Yes, ma'am, that would be fair and accurate.
That'd be fair. Okay. That's just my biggest concern, is I don't want anybody, you know, architectural plans are very expensive, and I don't want anybody that's already started into those plans then to have to alter them.
And that, that's a point well taken, because the cost can be significant to go back and redesign a building even at 30 or 40 percent to comply with the new codes if some of the substantial changes impact that building in use.
All right. Then that works for me. I, ISO was my big concern, so I'm glad you were able to straighten that out for me.
Any more questions?
Just on a slightly different topic, since we were talking about costs and impacts and, and whatnot, that I think is 17-page PDF that, that you and I discussed over email. If you'd be so kind as to pass that along, I think it was in PDF format, pass it along to, to the other council members. Just so they know what I'm talking about, came across a, a summary of, of cost and, and other impact data on the, the code adoptions or the code improvements from the last version. And while it's not an end-all, be-all for, for all questions by, by any stretch of the imagination, it kind of provided a shorthand narrative as to impacts upon costs and contractors and whatnot. So I thought that might be helpful for, for you all. And no big surprises, but Cliff's notes is always welcome when you're dealing with these sorts of documents.
And if I could add on to what Mr. Ringenberg said, the National Multifamily Housing Council, the National Apartment Association, the National Association of Home Builders, and the Building Owners and Managers Association all recommend adoption of the 2015 codes in the document that Mr. Ringenberg provided. And I will forward that to you before I leave my office today.
That would be helpful. I'd appreciate that.
Thank you.
And thank you for getting that, too.
All right, any other questions on the public hearings?
Just another quick shout-out to Chief Carmody for working with Jody, for getting those materials posted online, posted copies of the briefings that we received during the last session. And so thank you again.
Anything under the ordinances? How about the resolutions?
Dick, on the, on the resolution for the purchase of the, of the ambulance, I don't know if you had a chance to look at that. My, my question is simply this, that the resolution appeared to center on reasons for rejecting a bidder as opposed to accepting the, the bid that, that's being recommended. So I was, I was wondering if, if maybe we needed to add a line or two to that resolution, or is it not a problem?
I think the reason it's worded that way is to address the concerns of the low bidder who was zeding to be a responsive bid. But I'll take a look at it and if I may suggest some additional language.
Fair enough. Just minor point. Thank you.
Other questions on the resolutions? Applications for permits and cancellations? Save your record.
I have a quick question since we're all sitting here and Dick's back. I saw the plethora of emails about Iowa West and meeting or not meeting or, are you gonna maybe, you probably haven't had a chance to look at it yet since she's got back, but let us know your thoughts.
The last thing I, I saw was an email from Pete suggesting that he would meet with the mayor, Roger, and you.
Then Matt sent one, I think it was third, what day did you send?
I didn't see it either. I didn't see it either.
That was directed directly to me and wondered, wondered if there would be, there'd be an issue with, with the open meetings law, and I told him no.
Because you sent that email on whatever day it was.
Friday.
Friday, okay. Did you see the email that Matt sent? That's the last one I've seen, asking you, because it kind of went through, like, what happened?
But then I asked him this morning, and Dick said he'd gotten a follow-up email from Pete after that, so he didn't.
What did Pete's email say?
Rather than set up individual meetings with everyone, couldn't he just meet with, because Al didn't want to do a non-public meeting, could he meet with you, Roger, and I? And then nobody else, and then that would alleviate some concern about the, the walking quorum that.
And I responded to that email, I think it was Sunday morning to Pete, saying that that would not be a problem with the law.
Okay. So we're not gonna do everybody meeting?
Iowa West has made it pretty clear they would not do that, so. Both from Pete and from the President of the Board, they, they are not bound by the Iowa Open Meetings Law and that they don't have any intent of doing a public meeting.
But we are.
No, we're not.
Well, we're not sure. That's what we were gonna have, Dick.
Not, not under these conditions.
Right, if we do it this way, but the other way, we were not sure.
Well.
Generally, yes.
I, I would say it, it helps, but the, the intent of Chapter 21 is to ensure that the public is provided access to meetings that, that go on that involve elected officials. And while it may not be a violation of Chapter 21 per se, I think it's still kind of an open question as to whether or not it's perceived as a potential workaround of, of open meeting law. So while, while I think the, the suggestion gets us closer, it, it again boils down to a question of perception and, and openness, so.
When it's a meeting where no decisions are being made, would that still be the implication? I mean.
Well, that was my takeaway of the discussion with the attorney at the Public Information Board, that, yeah, that in itself can still be problematic. And while she, she made it clear that the scenario, as I set it out, would not necessarily cause a, a violation of Chapter 21 per se, it does subject the city to, to potential allegations and, and formal complaints. And that's something that I want to avoid. And beyond that, again, I, I personally feel that the public does have a right to, to understand what's going on in these, these meetings, these, these discussions, or even these presentations. If there's no discussion necessarily, they still have a right to be privy to, to what's being said.
If, if you've talked with Pete and Rick, do you have a decision that they, have they told you a decision?
Nope. Absolutely not. I asked, I said to them that I'd seen emails from you, from Melissa, and from Al requesting that the meeting be an open, public meeting. And both of them told me that absolutely do not intend to do that. So that's the gist of the conversation. I haven't had any conversations with them that I would know any more than any of you would know. They wanted to set up meetings. I responded that I was ready and available to do that. There's been, yeah, there's, tried to do a doodle scheduler. We haven't gotten dates yet. I don't know. There was concern that after Councilman Ringenberg talked to the Iowa group, I followed up, talked to the same attorney. I'm sure got the same information from her that, that I interpreted it as I wrote in the email to you, that it's not a violation of the Iowa Open Meetings Law, as long as you avoid the, what they've termed the walking quorum, that if the city attorney blesses it, it gives you some indemnification, that it would make sense to have the city attorney at all those meetings to make sure that nothing goes beyond that, and that we could do that. And if somebody on the council felt that they were ethically challenged by that process, it was certainly well within their rights to not have the meeting, and just as I wrote in that agreement. So I don't know, they.
I just can't imagine just having two people, why that could even be translated as being a violation? Because just like when you met with the West Broadway Group, you know, you meet with your constituents on different issues and try to get, you know, different information from different people. So I, you know, I guess I'm a little concerned about this, you know, idea that the public, that we could still be in violation if only two people were to meet, because I just don't see that as even being reasonable. Because I know that we all do different things with different groups and take different information or go get different information. I don't really see how two people meeting could possibly violate that.
I think that's new. We, I didn't know anything about that. I don't think, the last I saw was the.
Councilman Ringenberg said even you two just meeting could be interpreted as being a violation.
Well, no, I, I want to be clear as to, to the language that's being used here. I mean, there's, there's a difference between the, the spirit and the intent of the statute and conduct that would constitute a violation of the statute. And, and in talking with, with Ms. Johnson at the Iowa Public Information Board, she concurred that there's nothing in this scenario as being set out that would constitute a violation per se. However, the, the intent of the, of the law, of the, the code chapter was to ensure that information coming before elected officials on matters that concerned city business was conducted in such a manner as to be available to the general public. In other words, the general public has, has some right to know what's being said about businesses that either is going to come before us or has come before us, and now they seek a, a different course of action. And, and my intent on this all along is just to make sure that those discussions are held in public, because we held two very public hearings on it that were well-intended. We, we all received a large number of, of input on, on the question of the medians. And, and I think it's very important that the public continue to feel as though that we are listening to all sides and not giving any entity or group of individuals special preference in providing medians that the public's not privy to.
But this isn't even an issue that would come back before the council. That decision's been made, so, you know.
I never heard, that's the first time hearing of just Melissa and myself and you, I guess.
I just got the question.
On Sunday.
I, I came across it Sunday.
Well, I, I wouldn't want to be the only, I mean, you guys don't want to meet with them, just?
Well, I think that, and I'm not putting words in your mouth, it eliminates the walking quorum argument.
Yeah, but I just don't want to be, if they want to meet with them, I don't want to be the only one, you know what I mean?
I don't have a problem if you want, I don't have a problem if you want to meet. I don't.
I have no problem with it either.
I mean, obviously, the best case, yeah, would be that everybody can meet, we can meet wherever and do it, so it's advertised without being a problem, but.
I know you keep saying that, but I'm telling you, they're saying they won't do that.
I know, they're saying they won't. I'm just saying that would be the best case, would have been the best case if we could have all just met at once. Had, you know, we got Iowa West, we go here, wherever, I mean, I don't know what the.
Even one of their board members was here that night. I mean, the night we voted, he was, there was a board member here, so.
I don't know. Them that's got the gold make the rules, and, and if they say they don't want to meet in that fashion, I guess they don't want to meet in that fashion. So I, I don't know what I can do to make them do that. I've talked to them about it, and, and they told me they absolutely don't want to do that, so.
No, I understand.
Well, I, I hope that part of this process is that we're opening up a, a dialogue to better understand each other and how the, the two organizations does business. Because clearly we, we have a, a difference in, in how we're organized and governed. And they have a certain set of expectations that don't necessarily meet with our understanding of, of how things have to, to operate in, in the public sector. And so having these sorts of discussions and meetings, I think, would be very helpful to helping break down some barriers and miscommunication. And if we're, if we're not, if we're not allowed to, to have those, those meetings, because they want everything in private, that's, that's, that's regrettable.
That's like any other private foundation board, though. You're not gonna get the Suzy Buffett Foundation to meet in public with an entity on their foundation grants either. So I don't think it's that different. I mean, we went and asked them for a grant.
I think we want to meet with the people that voted to change the plan without, that they were funding, so. Roger asked, should they just meet with me? I said, I think, I think what they want to do is meet with the people that, that voted to change the plan, which was the plan that they approved their grant based on, without talking to them, so.
Yeah, I asked for the meeting, for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
I have no objection if you want to meet with them.
I have no objection.
Yeah, I'll, I'll meet with them. But, I mean, like I said, the, the, it makes sense to me, because we all voted. I know you, we voted three to two. Like, like Pete said in the email, he wants everybody to get the information directly. Like, I don't need to come back and tell you guys something, and it could be interpreted different by me than what he said. You know what I'm saying?
If you could, though, maybe you guys could just ask that once those meetings are done, that that be put out then to the rest of the council, maybe in a, an email or a letter or something, so that we have the information. I don't have a problem with not meeting in person. I mean, obviously, we all want that funding back. I don't think that there's any secret that, you know, that I personally want to see that project move forward, so I don't know that my meeting with them is necessary and that nothing has changed about my position. I'm very, very vocal about wanting to see the redevelopment and, and the, so this was kind of more about, and maybe, I don't know, you asked for the meeting, but I'm just assuming about that particular issue, about getting the rest of the funding.
And that's, that's why I asked for the meeting, is because that let, the email, the original email was kind of open-ended.
Yeah.
So, so that's why I asked for the meeting, like, what's the next step?
It was very open-ended.
Yeah, it was open. So that's why I asked for the meeting. And with it being open-ended, we're, we're all kind of involved. I guess is why I don't want to meet individually. I will, if that's what you want, I mean, I.
Well, well, I look, I look at it as, you know, whenever, whenever one or at most two of us meet with any constituent. And, and I agree, no constituent's more important than another, you know. But, you know, if I, if I go have coffee, or you and I go having coffee with a, a small business in town, it, is it really a public meeting? No. Is it a secret meeting? I wouldn't call it a secret meeting either, but, you know, they're, they're just wanting to talk with us, and we're not taking it down verbatim and sharing it with the world, but we're trying to hear out their concerns. So in that sense, it's kind of a private meeting, but it's not, it's not nefarious or illegal. I mean, I, I don't think that's any different here. I realize they're a big player.
That's why, I think it's just a different situation. It's an unlikely situation. This probably never happens.
Well, it does happen, but, but it's rare. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just an unique situation.
Yeah, you know, and so if, if, if you want, if, if up to two of you, you want, you want to go and, and talk out your concerns and, and try to find a way to meet what, what your vote, and, and hopefully get them back on board with money. I, I have no problem you having the conversation, you know, if we were gonna change something, obviously we'd have to do it as a council. It goes without saying.
And that's the other thing is, to me, you guys want the same funding that I want. You know what I mean? We want them to fund the project completely through all five phases.
Sure.
So together, we all want to succeed. I know they want to succeed with the community, too. So it, it's just together, I think we can work, work better together than individually.
I actually don't know what they're gonna ask. My sense is they're gonna say, if you change it again, can you clue us in on it and let's go forward, so.
I don't.
Yeah, and I, I don't know. So I'll meet with them. I'll, I'll schedule it this week, or next week, because Pete has the dates for.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't guess they had exactly what, what they want to talk about. They may, they may, they, they, yeah, and I'm not saying you. You know, or, or they may just want to reiterate in person. I, I've had meetings with them both ways on that, where they'll, they'll want to, you know, try to come to some objective, they're, they're willing to compromise. And then there's some where they just want to give you the, from their perspective, the benefits, benefit of a courtesy of telling you to your face, literally, to your face. No. It, it could be one of those things. I, you won't know until you meet with them.
If, if everybody here wants me, or me and Melissa, or me and Matt to meet individually, I will gladly do that.
I have no objection to that.
And I don't think it's any, shouldn't be a mystery to, to Iowa West as to why we've been wanting to set up the, these, the speeding and make it public. We, we had that discussion after Iowa West made its announcement that it was going to suspend the funding. And, and at the next study session, we, we talked about this, this very thing and the need to, to have a, a dialogue with them. And, and Roger promptly followed up with that, and thank you for taking that on, Roger. But I think Iowa West should understand at this point, from what was said on the record, that we're trying to accommodate their concerns and make this, make this bump in the road a, a smoother surface upon which we can travel in the future, that we can use this as a positive going forward.
I just want transparency, I guess.
Yep.
Anything else? All right, see you at seven.
Got to go and charge my tab.